Good evening. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals in the town of Newcastle, April 24, 2019.
Tonight we have two extensions. One is the Upper Westchester Muslim Society, if they're here. Give them first.
Good evening Chairman Cooper, members of the board. As you may recall, my name is Dan Richmond. I'm a partner with the law firm Zarin and Steinmetz here on behalf of the Upper Westchester Muslim Society. The Upper Westchester Muslim Society is here to respectfully request another extension on its special permit. It is still in the process of doing fundraising and completing the plans. There are no changes in circumstances since we were before your board initially. As we've indicated, we've sent a letter. These extension requests typically are type-two actions, whereas here there are no change in circumstances. We're happy to answer any questions your board may have, but as your board may recall, this project was thoroughly reviewed by your board pursuant to a comprehensive environmental review under SECRE, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, that thoroughly vetted all the issues. And again, there has been no change in the relevant environmental circumstances.
Can you tell us how you arrived at 18 months is the appropriate extension period?
I think that's...
For code?
Yes.
And is there any way of knowing if there might be further extensions as it relates to this?
You mean past those 18 months?
Yes.
I believe, you know, that they're serious about getting, you know, doing the fundraising, pursuing the plans. You know, I can't anticipate that far in the future, but I don't have that anticipation now.
Have you gotten the building permit yet?
No, we don't have it, but we'd have to finalize the plans. As you may recall, again, there was a comprehensive environmental review that resulted in plans that imposed many conditions upon the UWMs that were, you know, pretty detailed plans.
Have the conditions are still being complied with or taken care of most of the early conditions? What's left to be done?
In terms of...
Those conditions, preconditions to...
Well, the conditions mostly have to do with, you know, operational, have to do with design of the project, so there's no question of compliance now.
Confirming the plans.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else?
Are you all done with the planning board and the architectural board?
Yes. Yes, we've completed that, and the planning board actually granted us another extension a couple of months ago with regard to our wetland site plan and subdivision approval.
And so what's that? So except for money, you're ready to put a shovel on ground?
Essentially.
Is that what you're telling us tonight? Okay.
I move that the board approve the 18-month request for an extension by the Upper Westchester Muslim Society.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and attention.
Next extension is Pradhan, Emmett, and Tanya. Are they here? You're looking for hello, but this thing you ain't looking for.
Is there anything that you know about this, Adrian?
They said for six extension requests, they're looking for this six months and a year.
Tom, anything that you know about it?
They were looking for six months to get started.
Okay.
The letter says three months.
Verbal conversations. They weren't sure that they were asking for six.
I move that we grant the six-month extension for the Pradhan application.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll be hearing Avizado Alteros.
My name is Shahin Ashmada. I'm a project manager for 242 Crotton Avenue. The only change that we have done since the last meeting, we have moved the deck to the right-hand side of the structure, which we're just adding for the variance for the structure of the family room. We're going to need to take out for now. If you want to take a look at...
Can I come here just a second?
This is a pretty little flat.
Okay.
No, this one, I'm sorry. If you see the deck, if you... This is a setback line?
Yes. So you don't require...
Screening anymore.
Oh, so you... I'm sorry. Go over to the microphone, please. Yes. So...
The neighbor was asking for the screening for the deck.
Yes.
So we removed the deck. We don't need the variance for that anymore. We're going to put it beyond the setback line.
There is, though, a portion of the deck that does fall within the setback line.
Right, it does not. How could you say that?
No. This hatch part is the addition?
Exactly.
And this is the deck?
Exactly.
So instead of bringing the deck over where you wanted it before you moved it back?
Absolutely.
Now you don't have to do the screening.
Exactly.
But the rest of the application has not changed from...
No, nothing has changed.
Okay. See that mark?
But this is not the final submission. This is just a...
Oh, that's just the addition. That's just the deck.
This is not the final drawing.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, when you say it's not...
You're asking for a variance just for the structure of the family room and the dining room.
Sure. Is that final as it appears on this?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
You're asking for a variance of 12 feet, as it is in the denial letter.
You don't need the deck anymore. Building Department's okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Last time we were here, there was a couple of questions about the sheds. Are we involved with that or...
We are involved with that.
Going to be separate?
It's going to be a separate variance or removal of the shed. The owner's, you know, making a decision now.
And that's not tonight?
That's not tonight.
That'll be another application?
Correct.
So we don't have to worry about it?
As far as we've spoken to the owner, they're planning to remove it. Put it beyond the setback line.
Okay.
Good.
I'm going to abstain. Because I wasn't here the last meeting, and I'm not familiar with the application.
Wait a minute, he waited till you guys came back. He can't lose now.
Okay. I move that we close public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application for... Altejeros? How do you say it?
Altejeros.
Altejeros, Avizados.
I think so.
For a family room, a family room?
Yes, I'm a guy, you don't want to...
Family room, dining room addition requiring a 12-foot side yard variance. Be approved for the following reasons.
I think we need the front yard also, Tom.
Front yard, we're not doing anything, choosing nonconformity.
Well, the front yard is not existing nonconforming. Do we need to put that in the motion, that we need a front yard or no? It's already there.
Tom, Tom indicated in your denial letter that they needed...
Two measurements, yes.
The 60 feet required proposed 55.
So we need variance for the five feet as well as the side yard for the 12 feet.
Oh, okay. So, and for a front yard variance of five feet, which is already previously existing nonconforming, these variants should be approved for the following reasons. The granting of the variance will not create a undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. In this particular instance, it's not a substantial variance. There is no other method feasible to achieve the desired end. Other than to grant the variance, there will be no adverse, known adverse physical or environmental conditions by granting this variance. This is not a self-created hardship in that the existing house is, as was stated, previously existing nonconforming, legally nonconforming. And you're going to put this on peers, right? You had said?
Yes, they are on peers.
So we'll need a survey of the peers?
Yes.
Before framing, so we're sure it's in the right blot. And if you could start within six months and finish within a year, we should grant.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you.
Kruglack.
My name is Tim Leonard. I'm the architect for the Kruglacks. We're here tonight seeking a six-foot side yard variance so they can construct an engraided stone patio on the western side of the property. It's part of a project that we're doing in addition to the house in the rear, and the patio will be replacing the entire deck structure that you see in those photographs there. They've already been removed because the project is already under construction because we wanted to fast-track that portion, knowing we were going to come here at some point and ask to get this variance so we can actually have a squared-off patio versus one that follows a quirky angle because the house is not parallel to the western property line. So, you know, the patio will start at grade level, and as it comes towards the front, because the grade slopes a little bit, the front part of the patio will be about, you know, 20 inches, 24 inches out of the ground. It'll have a little stone veneer on it and no railings. There's some decent pine screening between this house and the neighbor's house. And frankly, I don't think anybody would notice the difference in that little angle. It's just more convenient to place furniture on it. Total square footage that we're looking for is maybe 50 square feet of this tiny little triangle that you see highlighted there.
Are you removing all of this stepson, steps and everything?
Gone.
No, not yet.
Get out of here.
What about the play area? What is...
It's going to stay, right?
That's staying?
That's going to stay, yeah.
Okay. So not in your way?
No.
So why is something like 400 feet required, square feet required, as opposed to 300, and perhaps it fit within the setbacks?
Well, the placement of where the doors are in the back of the house and where the grading is, it's a very private area back there. So we've actually pushed the patio back as far as we could to meet where the sliding doors are coming out from the side. But there's already retaining walls back there holding up that hill, so we figured let's take that space and utilize it. It's going to be less square footage than that deck that was there.
Okay. Sir, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
No.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Kruglack application for a six-foot side yard variance for the construction of an engraided patio be approved for the following reasons. This will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit is not easily achieved through other means. The requested variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And though self-created, it will allow the homeowner the enjoyment of their property. You have six months to start, one year to complete. Are there any surveys, Tom, that you require?
We will need a final survey once it's done, yes.
Final last bill? For these reasons, I say we should grant.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks very much.
Happy variance.
Levy.
My name is Dan Cantelmo. I'm the architect for the project at 18 Tall Timber Road with my client, Kimberly Levy. We are seeking a side yard variance of nine feet. There's an existing screened-in porch, which was original to the home, which was constructed 25.9 feet from the property line, and at the time had complied with the zoning, which required a 25-foot setback. When zoning was changed in 1991, this structure became nonconforming and is currently nine feet over the setback line. We are hoping to enclose the screened porch to living space. It has a concrete foundation and a roof, columns that would all remain, and we would just infill it with studs and finish the exterior.
No change to the footprint?
No.
And the, this debt, the screened-in porch that is being replaced, that is a screening that is not enclosed in any way, right? It's totally open screening?
Well, it's, it is closed, so the only way in it is from the inside of the house and then a door to the rear.
But I mean, it's screening year-round?
Yes.
So it's not heated or anything?
No, not right now.
Okay. But when you enclose it, it'll be private then?
Right. I just wanted to mention that it was our feeling in recommending to the clients that they go for this variance because it's a room that they benefit from as a home office that although a screened-in porch is not heated and not technically considered living space, it's obviously a space that you can live in and entertain in. When it becomes an office, it becomes a room that is more private, quieter, and I feel that with the, with the construction that we're proposing, that it will, it will become, have a positive impact on the neighborhood because it will close in an open space. It will add value to the property. And it's also, I don't think this comes out in the application, but it's also part of a larger project where we were refacing the entire house. So we're adding new siding and new windows to the entire house.
You are pretty hedonist.
Yes.
And the foundation is a cross line, a lower cross line foundation?
Yes, it's assumed to be and is part of the construction drawings that it needs to be verified that it is. But it's, it's been standing for 50 years. Also, there are no new imposed structural loads on that foundation because it's an existing roof and carries the snow load.
Other than the weight of the walls?
And, right. Which frankly would probably strengthen it.
Tom, one of the applicant's neighbors wrote a letter to the board, I guess addressed to you.
Correct.
Raising certain issues, including the accuracy of the survey and so forth. Do you want to speak to those matters?
I will. A site visit revealed, and based on the survey of the gentleman's property next door, that the property line seems to be where your grass is cut right now. He owns the wooded section. And if the board would agree, maybe having the property line staked and a safety fence put up that would quell the concerns that the neighbor has of people trespassing on his property.
Do you have any objection?
I do.
Okay.
By the way, you should have also received three letters of support.
We have, yes.
So do you have that letter handy from the neighbor?
Yes, we do.
I just want to go point by point.
Okay.
Their first comment in the opening, second paragraph, "We are concerned about the distance of the property line not being properly measured." I'm not sure why that's a concern. "We're fairly certain," based on conversations that the Levis have had over the years, "that they have their own survey and they could just refer to it, that we've submitted a survey, which was submitted and presented by a reputable surveyor. Although it does go back to 1961, nothing has changed. The foundation of the screened porch and its location to the property line has not changed in, just say it's 50 years plus." They may be concerned, but I'm not really sure why. Another sentence, they say, "It appears that both permit plans, that they're, they will be doing extensive work on the side of the house, and we wish to avoid damage in any form of our property." So as we explained, they use the word extensive. I think what they meant was, "We'll be doing a vast improvement." I think that's what they meant to say. Inserting a stud wall into an existing opening is not extensive work by any means in construction. So their comment number one is about getting a new survey because they're unsure where Again, they say they would like to have the survey done by a reputable and licensed surveyor. I think they mean as opposed to a nonreputable, non-licensed surveyor, which they already have, so there'd be no reason to redo it. I think, you know, it's their prerogative to have it resurveyed themselves if they wanted to prove something wrong, but it certainly wouldn't be the client's responsibility to prove that they're right.
I'm not asking you to survey the property. We're asking just to stake that one side. What difference?
No, they're asking for a survey. It says, "Have the Levis complete a survey."
The building department is asking you to stake, not the neighbor. If you stake that one side, I believe they don't have the right experience for a survey. I do.
Well, we didn't, we don't have that from you, though. We don't have a request from you. I'm just reading from the letter.
Well, tonight I'm making a request. If you stake that property line, you can alleviate all these problems by putting up a safety fence on the property line.
Okay.
Tom, what do you mean by a safety fence?
The orange safety fence that you see on a lot of construction sites. You might be familiar with the black silt fence.
You're not talking about a silt fence and all that?
We have no erosion possibilities here.
No, that's what I was concerned about.
The four-foot-high orange safety fence, stake somewhere just inside the property line will alleviate any blowing debris, any workers migrating off there. Having seen the site, it can be misconstrued, the property line. The Levis take very good care of their property. The other property is in a natural state, so it's hard to say exactly where the property line is.
Yeah.
I believe to be the grass-cutting line that the Levis do pristinely to be the line, but it could vary. When you, at the site with the survey, I'm looking up the line, and it jogs in and out.
I understand. That's not a hardship to me, just to put a safety fence up.
It's not. It's not, and it's not a terrible expense. I think what they were asking for later is something more substantial, and I think it would be very easy if the property, if the survey says that it's 25 feet, that we measure 24 feet and put up a fence, and, you know, we don't even have to involve a surveyor to stake it out, which, you know, is additional fees.
You could err on the side of caution and go 20 feet from the corner.
We could, because we don't need the room.
Meet the criteria?
Right.
It's just a temporary orange place to land this, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. The only reason I didn't address it is because they were asking for something different than what you had just said.
Okay.
So, because their next point is erecting a visible fence or barrier for the duration of the constructing. The only thing I had commented on in my own notes was that, you know, we are setting a precedent for all neighbors to say, every time there's construction and you ask for a variance, it opens up the doors for them to say, "This is what I want you to do for me." You know, "I don't want flying debris."
This board will evaluate that, so that's, that's fine.
Okay. Well, I just thought I'd point it out.
Sure. I think just the last point, if you would just speak to it, would be the point about the use of this room as it might change and as it might impact the neighbor.
Okay. So you don't need me to speak about runoff because there won't be any?
No, we don't.
And conditions that meet the town regulations, which is obvious.
Not an issue.
So the only other one then would be, it's kind of a big one. Since the open porch will now be enclosed, home office will be with more usage, which I totally disagree, and less than the required 35-foot setback, that the Levis include plantings alongside the outer wall to provide additional screening and noise abatement. So...
So I think the only point here is that this is an existing room that's in use by the applicant, and you're going to enclose it, and he's asked about screening because of this additional use, presumably.
Temporary screening.
No.
No, no, no.
Landscaping, right.
So, you know, all we need you to do is just address what, what he has said here.
So the one thing I wanted to point out is, I just brought a partial floor plan just to let you know that when you come in the front door, the first room to your right is the living room. The next is the porch. Just so you know that this would not typically, under any circumstances, be a bedroom because you have to go through the living room to get there. It's clearly set up for a home office. It's not really meant to be anything else. I've been working with the Levis too long.
I think what we're looking for is...
Sorry.
Your, in your professional opinion, whether or not there will be increased impact on the neighbor because of the revised use of this room.
Right.
That's, in my estimation, all that we need to address.
So easily, I feel like the impact will be diminished because, again, if you can imagine what activities did or could have gone on with a screened-in porch, it could be a family gathering with 12 people as opposed to someone or two people sitting in a home office working behind insulated walls. So I also wanted to show you the Google map that shows this. I hope you can all see that.
That's like the best Google map we've ever seen in this.
It actually came out really well.
Right.
This is the screened porch. When you're in the porch and you look directly out, you're looking into the woods.
Right.
What they're looking at is the corner, okay? This photo...
It's from the screen.
Is within the screened porch. What do you see? These photos were taken five hours ago, okay? This is looking at the screened porch about to be a room that is so offensive to the neighbors. You don't see the room, okay? Again, this was, and then this one is pretty telling. This is the neighbor's house, taken on a diagonal, looking at it. I'm sure you can see the house clearly through the trees. So not only do we not need landscaping, we have two rows of landscaping between the room and the neighbor, so...
Anyone on the board have any other questions or comments?
That's the neighbor's house.
As it relates to this? No. I'm just going to ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. Any other questions, comments? No. I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the application. Jordan and Kimberly Levy, 18 Tall Timber Road, for a nine-and-a-half foot load.
I would do it.
Nine-and-a-half? The structure is already there.
The structure is already there, so it's 9.04 is the exact measurement. It's not going to...
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
9.04 foot variance, side yard variance for the location of an exit, of a porch that is being converted into an enclosed area for the following reasons. This is a, the structure, the applicant has demonstrated that the structure that is going to be improved is a pre-exist, legal, pre-existing, non-conforming portion of a enclosed, of a screened porch, which they intend to enclose and make into living space. The applicant has also shown us that there is unlikely to be any necessity for any additional protection to adjacent properties by any impacts to their properties or the subject property because of the construction. Or the applicant has agreed to install a green, I mean, an orange plastic...
Temporary safety.
Temporary safety fence along the, as close to the border of the adjacent property during the course of construction for the purpose of privacy and restricting debris from being emanated from the property to the adjacent neighbor's property. No one, a number of neighbors have indicated...
Three in favor, just, you know, three in favor.
Yes, a number of three, three neighbors have written and indicated that they are in favor of the applicant's proposal. One neighbor has voiced certain objections, which we have reviewed, and the applicant has addressed all of the concerns there to our satisfaction. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. No other feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit that's being sought. The requested variance is not substantial, and the proposed variance will not have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or the district. And the applicant's difficulty or hardship was not self-created. For these reasons, I move that we approve the application. You have six months to start, a year to complete. We don't need anything further in the way of completion surveys, Tom. No completion survey, no.
No, nothing to change.
Right. For these reasons, I move that we approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, thank you, happy birthday.
Thank you. Mancuso?
This looks very complicated.
It's very simple and very complicated. My name is Tabani Tallo. I'm an architect for Mancausa, and only once in my 40 years of experience have I come with rock and a hard place like this one. So, we have a side yard variance of 28 feet.
I sit between rock and hard place.
Thank you. We have a side yard variance of 28 feet, which is technically simply covering existing driveway up to the garage. So, we also FAR because of the garage comes as a FAR. But let me go through the few issues before we go get further into the... The, this project would, we wouldn't be here unless we had, this is the existing house, and this is the existing driveway that comes up. There's a major rock, the major feature of the property is right there at the corner. Now, if we didn't have this rock here, I could blow up, just to carve out the, over here, and all these parking issues that Mancausa and Hester is going through, and they will explain, they're a young, very busy family, because they're both traveling professionally all the time, and they have daycare, babysitter, and they have house help. So, they have sometimes five cars on the slot where you can't turn anywhere, so you have to, over time you have to pull out, but they will tell more about that. Here's the current situation in front of the side yard garage. And here's the rock. It's a very beautiful piece of rock, and below that, the way will be not very pleasant. But I would like to have Professor to explain a little bit more.
Good evening, I'm Colleen Hasty. I'm co-owner of the house with my husband, John Mancuso. We're seeking to, the whole project pretty much started with the idea that our garage just isn't usable.
You might tilt that down towards you. Thank you.
We moved to Chapqua two years ago. We absolutely love it here, and when we moved here, the one thing we didn't do when we purchased the house is pull our cars into the garage. We quickly found out that it is not usable on a daily basis at all. The rock formation with the retaining wall prevents you from making that turn in and out, so to get in, you have to pull in and out several times to be able to line up with the garage door to be able to pull your car in. And then even once you're in there, we have a minivan and a Mini Cooper. It's incredibly tight fit once you're in there. You have only about a clearance of about a foot and a half between the cars. So, the only time we use it is if we know a snowstorm is coming, and then we take all the effort to manage to get the cars in. Otherwise, this is what our driveway looks like on a regular basis. We have three cars, because our au pair drives a car, and we also have help, you know, cleaning help that comes in, so frequently our driveway looks like a parking lot. So, the redesign of the garage would allow it, it would move over into the driveway space and allow the cars to pull in headfirst, which would eliminate all the cars being out in the driveway and slightly to our neighbors, quite frankly, as well as allowing our cars to be in the driveway, not exposed to the elements on a regular basis, and making it easier for us dealing with our children, getting into the car, bringing in groceries, and everything of that nature.
So, is it accurate that the existing garage is being reconfigured and will become smaller?
No.
Yes. The only other way to organize a third car is we come to the side of the, to the front of the house and drive in, and so that's, there's an electric panel that cannot be moved, because that would mean entire house be rewired.
Right.
And so, that's why the door is placed in the only place that it could be, and it would be a smaller door, and because of the height of the garage, they would have the third car that's the smallest to go in there.
And when we were, in the whole process of this, we found out something about the nature of the house. It made a lot of sense to us in that immediately above the garage is our dining room and kitchen, and immediately above that are our two children's bedrooms. And the rooms are exceptionally small when compared to the size of the other rooms in the house, and it didn't make a lot of sense to us, and we found out that when it was originally designed.
Only by looking at the FAR realized that the developer realized that they were over the limit, and they just chopped off the end of the house and hence the room sizes.
Right. So, not only for proportions of the physical aesthetics of the house by extending the additional part by eight feet, six feet, it also would allow those rooms that right now, although functional, aren't extremely functional, you know, we have five people on a daily basis, so fitting five people in the kitchen to eat is very, very tight as well. In the children's bedroom, all we have room for is a full bed and a dresser. We'd like to be able to put desks in the children's rooms, so they're able to study in there, and the, absent putting lofts in, it's just not possible in the current size of the rooms.
Why is your FAR so high?
I'm sorry, question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see how you computed your FAR.
Very much to the, by the requirements of your city. We went through it very carefully with...
What's happening with the existing garage?
We're using a third car.
For a third car?
Right, but we're entering from the side. There's a...
From the side.
Yeah.
From the front of your entry. From here?
Yes.
This is the existing garage.
Right.
Coming from this way. Coming from this way.
Right.
So, they're going to cut the garage basically in half, and this is going to be garage front door, and they're going to put a door here.
And drive in here?
And drive in this way, straight in.
They have all electrical panels in here, and that can be...
Mr. Dubbs, A11, give you the front view of it.
A11.
What I'm curious about is why then just expand the current garage a bit and go in straight instead of turning?
We would have to rewire the entire house, because the main service entrance comes in at that point.
The meter is right there.
So, it can't be moved either?
It's not an easy endeavor.
You're supposed to have home runs to everything in the house.
You say A11 is the best picture to look at, Tom?
That will show all the garage doors. So, the garage doors are thought to be perpendicular to the way they are now.
I'm saying just bigger. Put in the...
Doesn't affect anything else. They still have to go way over here.
Well, so but for that electrical panel, this would be doable, to expand out a bit and drive in straight?
But that's, the requirement for home runs is a, that means a lot of work.
Main electric service comes up via the driveway to the meter pan that's mounted right outside, adjacent to where the new single door would be.
Right.
And there, it would go through the wall to the main electric panel. From there, it runs individual circuits.
I understand, okay.
So, they'd have to rerun to all different types of junction boxes, which is not a preferred electric distribution system. And they'd still have to redo their main service coming in from the road to bring it to a different point.
On top of the new garage is now, you're going up, what, two stories? Increase the bedrooms and the, and the living area?
Yeah, the dining room.
So, you're just going to bring the house right up?
Yeah, on the existing footing.
And that's where your FAR, which comes in.
Excuse me, the board should be aware of that existing now on the site are the foundations for this six-foot addition to go up. The original builder, knowing that he was oversized, left the foundation as wing walls, if you will, to the garage, and then cut back the house, shortening the rooms.
It's right there. Time saver.
So, this is a, this is in a one-acre zone, and the footage, and it's actually, the lot itself is, it looks like a...
Over half, yeah.
And that, I see right away, is an explanation as to why the FAR needs to be, we need, they need a variance for the FAR.
They're an undersized lot.
They're an undersized lot in a larger zoned area, and so it's not that it's going to be a huge house at the end of the day compared to what's in that area. It's just because the lot itself is undersized.
Because of the rock. Also, the, I mean, the side effect is that because it's dropped down from the neighbor, making a grass roof over the garage, so, and you, basically, they won't see much of a house, it's just a...
You're going to have a roof garden.
Roof garden.
So, it's going to be grass on the roof?
Yeah. Because to do, A, you would lose all the windows for the dining room and the kitchen, and there's no meaning to it, because the pitch is so, would be so big anyway, so...
How will you care for the grass on the roof?
It's, this is a jabber center roof. It's a special, small plan that...
It doesn't grow up?
Yeah.
Can you grow things on it?
Yep.
Tomatoes and...
Oh, but no, 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 no. Hopefully, I would like, tomatoes get run pretty nice.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak in opposition to this application.
I do want to say that my neighbor is here. I think she would prefer not to speak, but she's here to answer any questions if necessary, so she's the neighbor that's immediately, if you're facing a house, immediately to the right, so they're going to be the most impacted by us doing that.
It's not necessary that she address the board, thank you.
She has no objections, we assume?
Okay. So, is the total amount of square footage that you're adding about 700? Is that, am I reading that correctly? And how does FAR, the garage square footage, is that, is that calculated into the FAR as well?
No. The upper rooms, they're expanding.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you want to do it?
Sure. Oh, you can do it.
I make the motion that we, let me see if I can read this. So, for John Mancuso and Colleen Hasty, 106 Old Lime Road, we, okay, they're requesting a side yard variance, so is it, can you, man, this is at four feet? Is it 29 required? Where's the calculation here?
Tom's, look at Tom's...
There we go. So, okay, so the, require a side yard variance of 25 feet, and the structure, the garage structure requiring a 10-foot variance of 25 feet, a walkway requiring a variance of 29 feet. The proposed addition will require FAR variance, required 3404 square footage in our one-day district. The proposed amount is 3,745 square feet, a variance of 341 square feet is required for the FAR. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes, sir.
For the following reasons, the granting of the variance will not create undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the neighborhood properties. In fact, they're making an effort not to blow up a nice-looking rock.
Just a one, the Architecture Review Board reviewed it, and they only added railings on the, on the garden roof. They liked it otherwise.
Okay. The benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method. You're hamstrung into doing this one project.
You're hamstrung into doing this one project. The required area variance, while substantial, there is no other feasible way to do this project. It will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment and the environment, environmental conditions in the neighborhood. In fact, there's a neighbor, a neighbor in present who is in agreement with this project, and it is not a self-created hardship, hardship as the property size and shape do not provide better options. Therefore, I move we grant the variance, so six months to start, one year to complete. And as far as surveys?
We will need a foundation survey and then a final survey.
Foundation survey and a final survey.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, happy birthday so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
I move that the board adopt the meeting minutes for the April 1st, 2019 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're off. What is your suggestion? Okay, thank you. This is a continuation of the, of the zoning board meeting. The zoning board has received a secret notice of intent from the planning board with their intention to be lead agency, or as it relates to an application submitted by Homeland Towers LLC and R-Mobile Northeast LLC for a special use permit. The board acknowledges the planning board's intention and raises no objections. Everyone
We'll be reviewing a separate
I agree.
Application for variance on that.
I haven't seen it yet.
They will be referred to us, yes.
At some point, we'll
Do they need variances?
They need a variance for the height.
Oh, I read, I read that, okay.
If you're an involved agency, you definitely have some permitting. I haven't seen the application either, but I guess
I think most
Yeah, we haven't received anything, but you will be involved, you are involved, and you'll be, they'll be asking for a variance.
From the description of the work and what's involved and all the other permits, it's saying, it seems like the planning board has much more to do and is better suited to be the lead agency than, than we would be.
I agree.
We have a minor input in the way of a height variance possible.
I think that's correct. Is there, is there a requirement for us to vote on this or to?
You may want to ask Adriana to send a memo to the planning board just indicating.
Okay, okay, yes. Adriana, can you send that notice, please, to the planning board? Okay? Okay, now we're adjourned. Okay, we're off now.